And welcome to the May 8th Millis School Committee Meeting. The meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under the School Committee section. We will take a roll call to start the meeting. Before we do that, I just want to congratulate our returning member, Mr. Catalano, on his reelection last night. And welcome Robin Briggs in as new member to the committee. So, thank you so much. We're thrilled to have you here. So, welcome aboard.
Thanks, I'm excited.
So, with that, Ms. Roach?
Here.
Ms. Briggs?
Here.
Superintendent?
I'm here.
Mr. Catalano?
Present.
Mr. Conroy?
Here.
Teacher representative?
Here.
And no student representative, because I'm sure they are...
It's about time to hear.
Yeah, busy with something.
Start.
All right. Jody, if you have anybody signed in for open session?
We do. We have a Mr. Mike Banks.
Okay.
That'd like to address the committee.
So, yeah, we'll go a little bit out of order. So, I know that Mr. Banks is here to talk about the new basketball courts. So, we can do that. If you want to come on up, we can start with that one. Sorry, I jumped down one. We'll do that, so you can...
Good evening.
Do you need me to introduce myself?
If you don't mind, that would be great. Yes, please.
It's Mike Banks, and I'm on the school building committee, elementary school building committee, and the rec committee. And I'm here, I came a few months ago to talk about repositioning the basketball court that's in the plans to go right next to the tennis courts that are going to be reconstructed. And the concern is that they're being placed next to the elementary school playground materials used to be like quite far away from the basketball court. Now, they're looking like they're going to be right next to each other. So, we're looking to reduce the incidence of groups of such a high disparity in age running into each other, giving people that want to play basketball the chance to play how they want to play and use the language they want to use, whatever, and have the kids who are, you know, maybe when their older siblings are playing baseball or softball, they're able to use the playground equipment. So, I met with John Engler, and I've talked with DPW about a potential site. I talked to you guys about it last meeting that was here. We're looking at putting it right behind where the existing after-school extended day program is. In order to do that, what we're looking at, there's a little bit of a grade there. So, we're talking about building a small retaining wall, leveling it off, and then another small retaining wall down to where the soccer field would be. In order to do that, there is one electrical pole that will be, would need to be repositioned, and there would be a sewer drain that would also, and a pipe that would be routed a little bit farther away. So, I had talked to Jeff, who's our compass management project, he's our project manager, and he's aware of them. He had an additional conduit run when they were down there for lights, if we want to throw lights over there. And Jeff and Wayne Clacco asked me to come in. That's the site that we've selected to try to go forward, move forward with. We want to go through the pricing process, but before we do that, they just wanted to get the school committee's blessing to put a basketball court there if it's feasible. We would be exploring how it will be paid for after we'd see what the numbers look like. But it would either probably be from the school building committee allocated funds, or we could approach CPC for some assistance as well.
I have a question.
Please.
Will there still be a elementary kind of height basketball court that's going to be next to the tennis courts here, or is it going to just be this relocate, potentially relocated basketball court behind the annex?
So, I talked to Jeff about that, because we had looked at possibly moving the tennis courts inward to see if we could get parking, but they've already put down things, doing the site work they've already done. They already have markers for where fencing is going to go, and there's stuff they've done like under the ground, I guess, not technical on that. So, they don't see an opportunity to move the tennis courts over. So, his thinking was, and you know, the school building committee would continue to look at that flat top area as well, but that we should move forward with paving it. There are additional uses. I was thinking about putting, that we should do like eight-foot and maybe a six-foot hoop. Eight-foot would be appropriate for the kids that would be having recess on this wing of the building. I think really when you're like K1, 2, you're looking at six-foot hoops, and I think they would be using the other side. So, there, I think they have their own recess area on the other wing of the school.
Yeah, they do. It won't have a, it won't have basketball.
So, it won't have a hardtop over there?
Yeah.
But the, there's a couple of other options. The access road is going to be gated that goes around in front of the whole school, and we have, we can paint on that access road, so things like four-square. So, that hardtop can be used for recess, which is important. It's also a place, when it snows, the kids that don't want to play in the snow have a place to be. And I'm not sure, I'll have to talk to the fire chief. If we wanted to put hoops like that carry over, you know, that would be something I'd have to run by the fire department if we wanted to save that hardtop for another purpose. The only other thing I was considering proposing down the road is maybe putting pickleball courts there as opposed to going with adjustable net ones on the tennis court. And that would be using CPC funds, but that would be down the road. We could certainly put up eight-foot hoops like, you know, right away.
So, we have an action item, I know Mr. Banks is here talking about open session, but we also want to get his feedback, because we have an action item tonight to approve the location of the new basketball courts. So, the elementary school building committee is looking for us to approve the location so that they can move forward for the next step of actually gathering pricing.
Can I ask one question? Is this, so this is for permanent when the new building is built? Because we, Mike was here last time, we were also talking about temporary location to address the fact that the court's gone, and we're setting up something for right now. So, is that not what we're talking, what are we, what is this for?
Permanent new location of a full-size basketball court.
When the school is...
And it would be at the last, last part of the project.
Okay. So, this has nothing to do with what we were talking about last time?
The temporary one we talked in the past, yeah.
Okay. And just if I may, I was just talking with John Engler tonight about, and there are a couple of hoops, the ones that were over here that we took down were destroyed. Nobody really thought maybe we should save those. But there's similar style ones over at, was it Glen Allen? So, we have the opportunity, I've talked with Jim McKay over at DPW, and we're going to see if we can salvage those and maybe put them temporarily in. We'll talk with the school administration about appropriate placement for temporary use. Those are 10-foot. Because they have a large, a long reach out, we could put them on the perimeter, say, of a parking lot, and it wouldn't create like a hazard for a car to run into. So, that could be a good design.
Wasn't there also somebody, I thought Steve Cassidy had offered to put portable, get portable ones, or?
Well, I talked to him tonight when I was at a rec committee meeting, and he didn't think it was, he didn't think that it would be a wise decision to go with portable hoops just because they can move, they can be, you know, they're more prone to be vandalized, like the ones over at Glen Allen are like the heavy-duty tubular steel. It is something we could consider doing because they can be had cheap, but they don't have the reach. So, if you were to put them in the parking lot, for instance, it would probably occupy a parking space, because it has to be on...
Right.
We could do that.
I thought that was about because the conversation, and if we're just talking about this, fine, but I thought we also talked, because the whole idea was there was a discussion about blocking off a section of the big parking lot out there, and that that's where we were going with portable hoops, but then there was...
Well, so like the biggest problem we have is we don't have the hoops, but I'm hoping that those two at Glen Allen, that we can salvage those, then we can, those would be ideal for setting up on the perimeter of the parking area. John was also talking this evening about maybe trying to set something up behind. He said because there's cameras back there that the school might be, you know, willing to like use that spot as well. And then there was one other resident of the town who has offered us about $10,000 to help us in building an additional basketball court, but he really, he wants it to be in addition to what was already available. And, you know, we've had discussions about where that might be appropriate, and one of the spots was over near like the batting cages. We'd have to work with the neighbors, you know, if it wasn't lit, probably the noise wouldn't be an issue, but, so that's, that's, but I've been thinking about maybe we could get the court, the basketball hoops, either get the money that he's giving us and buy the hoops right away, put them up somewhere temporarily, and then move them when we identify another spot, and also asking the school building committee the same about the hoops that we're going to be getting, that will go, say, either whether it goes there or over in the proposed position, if we could get the hoops right away, we would have them for two years, so.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm, all right. So, I guess we can talk with this. I thought we were, I thought after the last meeting that I started on the agenda that we, that we were closer to what we were doing for the immediate need than it sounds like we are, but that's fine. Go ahead.
So, on the permanent existing, I understand that the school building committee wants us to make a decision, right, because it's our property, right? What's best for the design?
I mean, I feel like we're at a disadvantage because we're not part of the conversations at the school building committee meetings, so...
Yeah, I feel like this map is incomplete to see where it was, and, you know what I mean?
So, I think we, I think we all, so we have the luxury of having been involved in it from the very beginning. So, where it was, where it was going to go is directly behind us to the far right. So, if you take this map and you were to build kind of a block where the blank spot is, the, so if we have that, sorry, people at home, you're not going to be able to see that, but this is one of the wings of the new school. There is grass here, and then there's basketball court, tennis court, which is, which are the proposed locations. So, the recreation committee raised a concern about, as Mr. Banks said, having those age groups being in such close proximity. So, the, and if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, these areas were identified in concert with the elementary school building committee, right? So, these are recommendations that come from the folks involved in the design. So, so moving it...
So, they fit the existing design?
Correct.
So, which, is there one better than the other?
Well, looking at it from a holistic like park use experience, that's why we feel that it would be better to move it further away from the playground area, just...
I think the question was...
No, no, which one of these two axes, which one works better for the committee and you?
Yeah, there's two axes on the page, so are there two...
I don't have it.
Oh, sorry. So, I don't know, I don't know if there's a preferred spot. There's two axes that are on this. The one that you talked about is the one...
I'm sorry, it's the one closer to the soccer field. That's where the...
Yeah, to the left of the annex, right?
So, that's the one you think would be better?
Yeah, yeah. That's, in fact, the one, the higher one, there's a, there's some type of a drainage system up there that they didn't feel, that Jeff with compass management, being like very like knowledgeable of the plans, didn't think that that was feasible. There's going to be this like large plastic device that comes up, and I'm not really sure...
So, we really have one location?
We, and the school...
In the current one, in the current plan, right? Was right here.
Yeah, and there's...
Right next.
There's, the alternative is staying pat and like not going forward with getting pricing for this.
Can I just want to clarify one thing? Our vote tonight would allow, would be to approve the elementary school building committee to move forward to get pricing for this location. It's not a decision to move to this location.
Right.
So, we're not approving a move to this location. We're approving the discovery of a potential move to this location.
Well, and it's also, it's approving that if they feel that it's feasible to move it there and appropriate, that the school, because of that school property, that they would be okay with it being housed there.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a...
Of course.
By moving it, well, actually, I guess I would not challenge, but like to ask where the, where you get the information that having the kid, the two age groups together is a problem, because isn't that what we have now? And is there an existing problem with having high school kids near Clyde Brown kids?
Well, so, I, we're talking more about, I think you're thinking about maybe during the school day, or...
Well, even, even after school. So, no, I mean, just so right now, the way it is, before it got torn up, it was very close to the playground. So, is there a history of issues between the kids there and the basketball courts and kids that could be playing?
Right. So, there have been instances, of course, where, you know, like people have come over by the courts, there's, you know, like language and smoking, et cetera. As far as the proximity, the playground used to be like way over there, and the basketball court was over here. Now, we're talking about them being like right next to each other.
No, there was a smaller playground.
Yeah, there was a smaller playground.
There was a smaller one that got used a lot.
Are you talking about, not the school playground?
No, the, the school playground was the town playground.
Okay.
It was all, it were both towns, but then there was other equipment.
Oh, but we're talking about the hardtop surface area.
No, right beyond it.
Probably before you, probably before you guys moved to town.
Yeah.
So, there was, there was a section right in front of the, directly in front of the bandstand?
Okay.
That used to have playground equipment in it?
Right.
So, that used to have playground equipment in it, so then you'd be 25 feet maybe away from where the old basketball court was. That was gone by the time you got here.
And then the after-school program would always be out there, and they could play basketball, they could play in the, so I'm just, I guess I'm just worried that we're going to lose usage of the basketball court with segregating it way on the other side of the school campus, because this, where we have it proposed, is now pretty far away from Clyde Brown and the middle high school. So, are the kids during the day, are they going to lose, are they going to be able to lose usage of it? And, you know, after-school type programs, are, is it, are we going to be able, is it going to be tough now to be able to let the kids after school use the basketball court?
I'm going to jump in for one second on that one.
Okay.
Only, only because it's more related to the project itself than to this particular issue. So, in the original footprint of Clyde Brown, there were two basketball courts. There was one that the elementary school used all the time, there was one that the high school kids used all the time. So, extended day, during recess, for PE, they used the elementary basketball court. The one thing that was not part of the building project is replacing two, an elementary-type basketball court and a high school type, if you will, basketball court.
So, was this an addition to the one that, I mean, or is this in place of?
So, I think it's being proposed for it to be in place of, but there's still discussion of what to do with that space that would be left behind, and that, that's the piece I don't know, because I haven't been at the meetings to talk through this.
Right. So, one option there would be for eight-foot hoops, which would be appropriate for the younger kids to replace the court that was removed.
Sure. I think that, I mean, if it was in addition to, I think I would be more supportive of, and that, instead of, in place of, does that make sense? So, if we were, if we were able to add another court for this purpose for the older kids, I think it would make more, at least, I'm just speaking for myself, not for anyone else.
Right.
It would make more sense in my mind than trying to replace the original design of having the basketball courts there.
Can we have two, sorry, I just want to ask one question. And I don't have the plans. Can we have two, I thought we were putting two courts, so we have the tennis, two tennis courts, I'm trying to remember, because...
No, it's, it's four tennis courts and one basketball court.
Okay. All right. Yep?
So, one, I guess, I'm comfortable vote, I'm comfortable voting to support the elementary school building committee getting pricing for this additional. I'm not prepared to support saying, and then if you guys think that that's what you want to do, just go ahead, because I'd, I'd like to understand a little bit more, I think, to what Carrie was saying.
Yeah.
Okay, if, if the design as it is right now has a court over here, what happens to the space that's over here if we bring, put it, put a court over there? Because unless it's kid playground, you know, if it's pickleball or tennis or something like that, unless only elementary school kids are playing that, then you, I would argue you have the same problem. So, I guess I just, yeah, I'd like to, and why? Because I do remember there being discussions about putting a court way back over there, and there were concerns that it was too isolated, and all of a sudden you've got kids over there that no one can see, you can't see anything that's going on over there, and there's no, so, I guess...
So, there's a, there's an elementary school building committee on May 15th, which is next week. So, what if we do, as Mr. Conroy mentioned, which is vote, put a vote or have a motion to allow for pricing for a court in this location? And then I will be attending that meeting next week. I'll go with a list of questions so that we can have an understanding of current location and what's happening with that as part of the design, and then maybe we can have a follow-up discussion at a future meeting.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I would be supportive of going with just getting pricing for the feasible, or pricing it out, but not agreeing. My request would be the next time, maybe bring Jeff D'Amico or someone with two, two maps or two drawings. One, what was the original plan? And then two, what is the proposal? Because I'm sorry, this is not, this is not on you, but this is not, I'm having a hard time seeing this, so, we can move forward if they need to move forward on the pricing, let's do that. But when we have the discussion about the placement on school property, I would, I would ask that we'd have a, what was, what did it look like before, and what is the proposal now?
One thing I just want to point out, too, is that the existing plan is putting the basketball court on town property, not on school property. So, really, the, the reason why they want permission to, they want permission to move forward is because the new court placement would be on school property. So, to look at it, you know, and as to whether this is a replace or an add, you know, like the town is under the obligation to replace a basketball court.
Right, but the existing plan has a court designed. So, the question that we have is, we just want a better understanding of why the plan, I mean, the plan was designed, the plan was voted, as to, with a court right there. So, why now? We're just asking for why, why is there a push to move it from, from the design plan, and then just have a dialogue about the pros and cons of why that's...
So, and I can, you know, and I think, like Carrie asked a similar question of like, is there a problem with having younger kids playing on a school, on a playground area next to, you know, adults and older teenagers? Like, I can attest that I know there's a problem with that, because I grew up in a community that had that problem, and they ended up having to hire like a full-time park ranger to just control that, to monitor it all the time throughout the entire summer. So, it may not be an issue that like is a, is a, is going to affect like the school day or the kids when they're out at recess, but it could be an effect for the community at large for the entire summer. So, I was talking to another rec director from Stoughton tonight about it at a rec committee meeting, and he was saying that he would be happy to come in. I mean, I can have people come in that, you know, their profession is like parks, and they can explain to you like the issue, the design issue.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessary.
But that's ultimately like the crux of it.
I don't think that's necessary. I think if we're going to have any conversation, it would be with the Millis PD to see if there's been any formal, I don't want to hear from another community.
Yeah.
And I coached on that field for many, many years with the kids playing basketball, and maybe once or twice I had to holler over about language, but I didn't see smoking, I didn't see drinking. There was a problem with trash, and we would pick up the trash.
Sure.
I don't want to make more of it than it is unless Chief Safia can come in and give us some explanation. I don't think it exists. So, I don't want to hear necessarily from another, I really want to know more about the placement and the implications on the, on the placement.
Okay. Would you want like a written letter from the chief, or, because I can go and approach that?
I don't want to make, I think just a conversation, I don't think it has to be a formal thing, just to say, have there been any problems with, and really, the specific question is the interaction between the older kids and the younger kids.
Right.
If the kids are out there causing problems late at night...
Is it a perpetual problem, not has there ever been a call? Is it a perpetual problem, not has the police department ever been called or ever been contacted by anybody about an incident? I think there's a distinction there.
I think having the kids there, knowing that they're doing something healthy, and, you know, if they don't police the area for trash, that's one thing, but if they're playing basketball, you know where they are, it's good, you know. I think we're conflating a lot of things here, and I just think we have to, let's focus, let's worry about the placement, and then, and then if there is an issue, a public safety issue that drives that, it would be helpful to hear from our public safety officials, not others.
Okay.
So, do you want to entertain a motion to allow the ESBC to go forward and get pricing on a move, on movement?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to authorize the ESBC to look at pricing of a basketball, placement of a basketball court on school property, but not to, just for the pricing of a placement, not to move forward with the actual placement on school property. I don't know, I made that more complicated there.
Did you second?
Sorry, did you second, Mark?
Yes.
Sorry. So, moved and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Teacher representative, you want to go ahead?
Yes.
So, we're going to jump around a little bit tonight.
The 18th is a half-day for all schools, and on May 23rd, the high school auditorium from 6:30 to 8:00, there'll be a parent information night on vaping, and parent, the substance of use program will be coming. There will also be a video on the screenager, adolescents and their devices prior to the vaping program. Clyde Brown has grade four MCAS on May 8th, which is today and tomorrow. Museum of Science classroom will be visiting end of this week. Grade three has MCAS May 15th and 16th. Grade four has field trip to Fenway Park, May 24th. The middle school has fourth and fifth grade parent information night on May 24th, and that will be in the high school library. And May 25th is Millis Music Day. High school has prom on the 18th, which is also a half-day, and their senior projects are being presented in the public library, May 21st through May 25th, and judges are always appreciated, so anyone in town that would like to help judge the senior projects is welcome to come and witness them. 10th grade MCAS are here at the high school on May 23rd and May 24th, and our graduation will be on June 7th.
Thanks, Bernadette.
Thank you.
All right. So, we will move to action items. Consideration to approve the 4/24/2018 school committee meeting minutes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we approve the April 24th, 2018 meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? abstained?
Aye.
Do we have an extension?
Yeah.
You're just voting to put them as public. You could vote if you wanted to, but that's okay. Madam Chair, she needs to leave.
Okay.
Can she go on the next agenda, or can we address her out of order? This is for the cost to recon trip.
Oh, okay, yeah, let's do it. Sure. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Fetschelt. I'm a high school Spanish teacher. I'm here on behalf of Nicole Palladino, who runs the program. I'm here on behalf of Nicole Palladino, who runs the program. I'm hoping to have our trip approved for next year. It is for 2019 during April break. We're taking 51 students to Costa Rica. This is our largest group yet. It's a very popular trip. It's a lot of fun. Students get to interact with the natives. We go to a school, we play with the children. We also help with some of the lessons, some of the singing, some of the dancing. Students will also have a cooking lesson, as well as a dancing lesson, which they love. It's a great trip. This is my third time going. Second time with Ms. Palladino running the whole trip. So currently with 51 students, we have so far five chaperones. And we've all worked together for the past three trips, so we're very familiar with each other. We hold off on the last three, only because students do end up dropping at the beginning of the school year and throughout. So it's really not fun to invite other chaperones and then tell them, sorry, you can't go because kids drop. So Nicole usually waits until December to decide the other three chaperones are. So we will have a total of eight. The one difference this coming year is that we will have two groups going because Costa Rica, with their narrow roads, their buses can only have a max of 30. So between chaperones, students, and our tour guide, we have to have two separate groups that will start and start at the end and the beginning, meet halfway. So that's why we'll have as many, more chaperones next year than normal, so.
So for motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state, out-of-country trip next April to Costa Rica for the dates April 12th through April 20th, 2019, with Nicole Palladino being the primary chaperone.
Yes, she's the lead.
The lead.
Lead person.
Second. So moved and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Sorry, okay, just one question, just because it took, how far in advance do they start planning these spring break trips?
I think a year, over a year in advance.
So we've had discussions earlier this year around the school calendar for the following year. So.
Right. That's for, it's for.
This is fine.
This is fine, but the year after, we're going to have to.
Because 18, 19 is fine, 19, 20 will be.
Right, right, right.
So we need to.
Tell them now. We need to figure it out, we have to decide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sooner than later. So I know we were going to send out a survey and do that stuff. Good point.
Should we talk about, should we rehab that? Should we have that conversation again? So when we send out a survey, we give them realistic options of what we think we're about to do, opposed to just leaving an open-ended thing?
I think we had.
Or do you have enough information, do you?
So this would be affected if we were to combine.
Into March.
February, April into a March, so that we.
I think that was the main question.
That's the main question.
Yeah, I think we were going to give people, I think we were going to give distinct options.
We were going to lay out the calendar as if nothing changes and show that we very possibly go right up to.
The end of June, last day of June.
Right. And that people needed, as people were voting or replying, they needed to understand exactly what we were talking about, so that.
And we can't go beyond June 30th? So if we had a lot of snow days, we'd be going to school on Saturday or canceling a whole vacation.
But I think the extra five days brought us to June 30th.
The extra five days, yeah.
But.
Which you run up against.
Yep.
Good point, that was a good point.
Okay, so now we have the consideration to reorganize the school committee. So as we do after the election every year, we reorganize ourselves. Actually, I haven't done this before, so. People can take motions first for the chair. So we need nominations. So somebody will nominate someone to be the next chair.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Roach.
I make a motion to nominate Mr. Catalano to be the school committee chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for Mr. Catalano to be the school committee chair. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I don't think you can vote for yourself.
Sure you can.
I mean, yes.
You did yesterday, didn't you?
Yeah, right, did you go to the polls yesterday? So I think with that, we switch. And then, do I do secretary, or does Ms. Catalano do secretary? Right, okay, because now I'm up the chair.
Thank you, Denise.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
You get to keep my purple backpack.
I'm going to rifle through it. And I'm going to take the pills.
Oh, my God.
I struggle. It's all right, Robert.
Cut that out.
I should have left my things over here. Sorry, we did not plan ahead.
Thank you for the nomination and vote. The next item on the agenda will be our, as part of the reorganization, is to identify the secretary for the upcoming year. Any nominations?
Mr. Chair. I would nominate Carrie Roach for secretary.
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Roach, are we okay with this?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Ms. Roach will be the secretary for the upcoming school year. The next item on the agenda is consideration to approve reduction of fees to Metro West Basketball for March 2018. I believe there's something in your packet. Can you fill us in within our what?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the previous vote, even though it referred to the 2017-18 school year, the motions specifically said through February. So what we need to vote now is to, if the committee wishes to, and Metro West Basketball is requesting, to waive a portion of the fees for March through June, because it wasn't included in the previous motion.
Are they, did they use, they used them on these dates in April?
So this is, Jody had prepared the April invoice. March had been invoiced. And that's in the green part below. We did a little summary. So fees for March would be $910, April $416, May same amount. And then June is only one week, I think, so, or four hours, so it's 104.
So Metro West Basketball is still running basketball in May and June?
Well, in March they did because the playoffs got pushed. I didn't, I don't know whose practice in April.
They've requested facility rental dates for the Clyde Brown Gym only. That's why March was both gyms, and April, May, June is only the Clyde Brown Gym.
So these are dates that they want, they're available, and so they're looking for a reduction.
They've already used them.
They've already used the.
The March.
Well, no, the April as well.
Yes.
Whereas where in May.
You're right.
There's 16 hours May and four hours in June. And so they're looking for a reduction. The $26 an hour, what did we reduce in?
By 50%. We reduced it by 50%. So if I did my math correctly, it's the 1846 that would reduce down to 921 would be the specific ask.
Okay.
Or, if I may, Mr. Chair, I would suggest making the motion to reduce the fees, the facility rental fees by 50% in case they add a session.
Yeah, yeah.
So rather than the specific amount.
I think the trick was how we voted it and how we discussed it. We had talked about for the season, but normally the season ends in February. So when we made the formal motion, I think we just did the cutoff of February. So it's just.
So they're looking to reduce facility rentals fees by 50%. So that would go from 26 to 13, but we put unlimited to the hours in case they add a day. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to reduce the facility rent, the hourly facility rental fee charged to Metro West Basketball from $26 per hour to $13 per hour through June 30th, 2018.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consideration to remain a choice district. Ms. Gustafson.
Mr. Chair, in your packets, you have a memo and an updated enrollment projection for next year. What we need to do is vote to remain a choice district, and then I have to fill out a survey for Department of Education indicating the grade levels that we have choice slots open. Because of the enrollment in grade three currently, I would recommend that next year we have choice slots in every grade level except grade three because class sizes will be in the 23, 24 range already. So every other grade level, having additional choice students would not push our class size beyond what is recommended or what we like to see in classrooms anyway. So I think the motion is two parts, to remain a choice district, but in all grade levels except grade three.
Any questions for the superintendent?
I have a question. I was just wondering how many choice in per grade typically?
It varies. For example, we have four, currently four choice kindergarten families that are interested. Principals gather the choice applications and date them in order of received. And then, once we determine, a little bit later in the summer, after we know, especially with the younger grades, what the move-ins are. There can be move-ins, there can be move-outs. So then, late July, early August, we let families know if there are choice slots. So in your packets also, under the superintendent's report, there is an enrollment update that's after the Costa Rica trip. And on that grid, we define how many students per month are in there. We identify in the column to the right of that how many choice students there are within that number. So you can see it ranges from two, a low of two in fourth grade, up to 11 choice students in grade 11.
Right, because there's only one spot in grade 11 now, so I was just curious.
Yeah, that one, typically, and that one, even though we say 11th grade, it depends on the schedule. So a high school student comes in, and it depends on what classes they've taken. Somebody might move in and be taking a mixture of sophomore, junior, and senior-level classes. So Mr. Malaney works with the family to say, do we have room in the schedule that would work for that student?
Any other questions or discussion? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, just give us.
I make a motion to remain a choice district for the 2018-2019 calendar year for all grade levels excluding, except for grade three.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda. We've already done a consider, yeah, consideration to approve a bus lease. Madam Chair. I mean, Madam Superintendent, sorry.
Mr. Chair. So in your packets, you have the memo on the bus bid. We went out to bid, we had an RFP for the buses. We had three inquiries and interest from three companies, but then ultimately only received a bid from one company. The, from New England Transit, which is our current bus lease company. The, but the lease, the bid came in higher than, than was the funding that was available. And we asked them if, to consider working with this on the options. Option one is actually not what we're doing. They put, on the bid forms, option one is not a consideration. What we're doing is actually options two and three, which is a five-year lease with the cost of leasing 477 passenger buses that get turned in at the end of the lease. And then, option three, which is 283 passenger buses with a buyout of $1 each for a total of six buses that we need. So the buyout of the two buses, the 283 passenger buses, is included in the proposal and the lease. So I have included then, in your packets, the vehicle lease agreement that our legal counsel has worked with us on developing. We've submitted it to Town Administrator Mike Kozinski for his approval as procurement officer for the town, and he has indicated that all of the documents look to be in order. Of course, we provided Mr. Kozinski with the full bid, which had been in the RFP, was in a previous packet for school committee that you had approved. So tonight, what we're looking for is approval of the lease agreement, the bus accepting the bid from New England Transit for six buses for a total of $89,999 per year for five years. For the six buses, two of those buses will have a $1 buyout at the end of the five-year lease period. The other four buses will be turned in.
Any questions for the superintendent on the lease?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't have any on the lease itself. It's more just confirming that, like, I know we've got the memo, I want to keep the memo, but do we have written communication from Town Council saying that the contract is fine as written?
From our council, Andy Woz from Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lahane helped us develop the lease agreement. I have an email from Mike Kozinski. And then, in meeting with him the other day, and Jim McCaffrey, he indicated that all looked in order. I do not have a letter.
Okay. Just because we ran into the issue of making sure that the buyout or the element fit with the financial regulations of what can be approved and not approved, I just would like to get something that confirms that this dollar buyout at the end and that there are no procurement-related issues in how this contract is structured. So that four years from now, we're not sitting here and there's a problem.
One way, one way around this is we take a vote.
Oh, yeah.
And then Nancy can follow up with Mike tomorrow saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't suggesting we not vote. Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't suggesting we not vote, I was just-
And then this is what we voted on, just to confirm that this is, that everything is squared away. Because you're right, we did, at the end of the last lease, have an issue, and we've been dealing with that for two years. So, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conrad.
I make a motion that we approve the lease with options two and three as presented.
And four, raise the buyout.
Oh, and four, yep.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes.
Thank you.
I think Mark's right about that.
Yeah.
Just following up tomorrow.
So, just to be clear, for a letter confirming that the lease as structured is legal and appropriate?
Meets all the financial, accounting regulations and procurement rules for leasing by municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then, we approve the out-of-state trip. So, next on the agenda is time and learning, social-emotional tiers, action plan update.
Thank you both for your patience this evening. We have with us Sean Seiberg, our school psychologist, and Elise Malloy, who's Clyde Brown School Adjustment Counselor and Assistant Principal.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Let's see if the technology works, we'll be good to go.
Right, as Elise is getting that going. Thanks for the opportunity to come and share some of our work we're doing in schools. So, the short presentation we'll give to you up here in just a moment, has really four main components. One is a rationale for social-emotional learning, which, an acronym for that would be SEL, as you hear that, social-emotional learning. The second part being a pilot plan that we have developed in the schools. And the third is what it, what that plan looks like on the ground at a school. So, Ms. Malloy's here for, to give an example of what's happening at Clyde Brown. And then, we're going to share some of the results and some future directions, so.
We're rebooting, so bear with us.
That's fine.
Do you guys have a handout?
We do.
We do.
In the interest of time, would you like me to kind of move along with that?
Sure.
And then, just, so if we're here, I'll give you three numbers.
Okay.
Okay, we're on the three-number page. So, looking at kind of a rationale for why social-emotional learning in schools. Schools are for learning, right? So, I'll, I'll put out three numbers for you. One is 20, one is 91, and one is 11. Okay? So, kind of keep those numbers in mind as I'm presenting the next three things. So, the 20 refers to the number of students that research has indicated are at risk for having social-emotional struggles, okay? And I think if you read any newspaper, watch the news, or look around, okay, it's not a surprise there's a lot of kids that are struggling in the world. So, it's, it's a number that really can't be ignored. So, there are a lot of students in all schools that struggle with interacting with, you know, with each other and managing their emotions, okay, as it relates to learning. So, so that's kind of your first number, is 20%, okay? And that's what the research shows is, is pretty typical. The second number is 90%, okay? And that is, or excuse me, it's 91, sorry. That is a number that looks at the effectiveness of social-emotional learning instruction in schools. When research looks at when that domain is targeted for instruction, does it work, okay? And of the studies, 90% of them show positive gains. So, if you're looking at reading, and you have a good program, and 90% of the kids make gains, that's a reading program you want. So, it's a, it's an area where there's need, and when you address it, there's effectiveness and change. So that's your second number there. The third being 11. And this is, when you target social-emotional learning, there's actually academic gains. And this makes sense, because if you're in a classroom and there's social difficulties, or students that are not, you know, behaving or managing their emotions, it disrupts the learning. So, when you target this domain, you, you see improvements in mental health, and you also see improvements in academic performance, readiness to learn, kids that like to be in school. And that's, that's what we want to see, is kids that like to be in school and kids that are learning. So, those are your three big numbers, okay? As far as, the foundation for the rationale for this is, there's a lot of kids out there that struggle. When you target it, kids do well, and not only with mental health, but also with their academics. So, boils down to three numbers, okay? Nice and simple. Pilot plan, we're still not up there.
Yep, very good.
There we go.
So, January of last year, I came on board here and worked with Dr. Marks, the principals and the counselors, to ask a lot of questions, gather a lot of information, and do a needs assessment. Okay? That took us a part of a year. By the end of that year, we had developed, you know, an act, an action plan, okay, to look at entire school year as kind of a pilot year, trying, trying some things out. So, that's what I'll share with you as our next part of this. So, with the, all the questions we asked in the needs assessment, we were looking at really four main components, okay? One is screening, okay? You know, the idea of getting a pulse on all of the students' social-emotional skills. The second being, when we have data, the adults come together and discuss what the data looks like. That's the idea of teaming. The third being tiers of student support. That's, that's the idea of TSS. So, with tiers of student support, it's very similar to the academics, which is the triangle, which is, they would flip. So with tiers of student support, just, just real quick, it's the idea that most students are going to do well in school, and there's a percentage that are at risk, and then there's a very few that are very at risk. So, I'll go over that and a little bit more in a minute. And then the fourth being progress monitoring. So the, as a quick summary there, four essential things we looked at with the action plan is screening, the teaming, the tiers of support, and to monitor their progress through the interventions. So with screening, just real quick, this is the idea that is very brief, teacher-administered assessments that help to sort students, okay? And Elise will describe what that looks like at a school. They take just a few seconds to fill out, but they're very indicative of these students are doing well and these students are not. So, that was very important to see if we're doing screening, and then, we developed a plan to do some screening for the kids across the, you know, across the district. The second being our teaming, okay? And, once we have the data, this will initiate all the discussions about the students, particularly about students that are having difficulties in school. So, we have used data as a whole school to look at how many kids are, are at risk in a whole school. We've used it at a classroom level to see how that data can inform classroom instruction. And then, we've used it at an individual level to figure out what are the unique needs of, of that particular student. Okay? The third component is our tiers of student support, and this is where you'll get your triangle. If you want to flip one more time there. This is the idea at the top, that it's the biggest group, which is all students need effective core social-emotional learning instruction from their classroom teachers, okay? And some students need some supplemental from their teachers in possibly short-term from someone outside the classroom. And then, there's just a few students that need intensive, kind of longer-term, carefully-planned instruction from a counselor in the school. So this is the idea of kind of the tiers of student support, and it's very similar to what we have set up for academics. And, as far as what, is, the what of the formula, and this is kind of a two-pronged approach, which is our, the idea of behavior and skills. So our PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, okay, those are all of our behavioral expectations, walking nicely in the hallway, example. And then, the other side is the SEL competencies, which are more skill-based. If you want to flip one more. So this is the idea of kind of building skills. Kids come to school, and everybody needs to learn different so, some kids come to school with better skills than others, okay? But everybody does have the, the benefit of learning to listen, learning to get along with others, how to manage frustration, okay? So this is the idea of social-emotional competencies. So, the school district, this year, our professional learning community adopted the standards from the CASL, which is Collaborative Academic Social Emotional Learning. And that's, that's this, I want to go back, that is the, kind of the wheel there, okay? So those are kind of the core skills, okay? So we adopted those as kind of a future direction for us to go, and it's kind of small print, but these are the kind of best practice of the skills to address. So, what does this look like in a school, okay? And Elise is going to-
About that? So, thank you all so much for having me, and Sean, Sean and myself here. I'm Elise Malloy, as Nancy mentioned, I'm the Assistant Principal and School Counselor at Clyde F. Brown School. So, practical implications for social-emotional learning at Clyde F. Brown. First, I wanted to say that while I'm here representing Clyde Brown, I'm also here representing the entire Counseling Department of Milas Public Schools. And the information that I'm sharing tonight not only is happening at Clyde Elementary, Clyde F. Brown Elementary School, but it is also happening at the middle school and the high school. But because I'm at Clyde Brown, I'm going to speak mostly for Clyde. So, the first part that Sean mentioned was the innovative screening tool. And I say innovative because we've been kind of looking at the state of Massachusetts, and there are not many towns or districts that are actually doing this work. We have a very simple rating scale that it's completed by teachers. It's completed four times a year. So, teachers complete this rating scale in September, December, March, and June. And it's, it's a, it's a fairly simple rating scale, a simple three-question tool that looks specifically at social skills, self-regulation, and perspective-taking. So when we were looking at that wheel a few slides ago, those are kind of the three main areas for social-emotional learning and social-emotional competency. So those are the three areas that we wanted to target. Just as we screen students for vision, hearing, academics, ELA, math, now we have a simple screening tool to look at students for social-emotional learning. And the results of that screening tool really inform our practice and our instruction in supporting students, looking at strategies and interventions to support them. And how we do that is through the data team model. We use a data team model that's very collaborative, and we meet with teams of teachers, so it would be a grade-level team of teachers. We would meet together as a group to kind of go over the overview of the data, kind of looking at grade-level trends. We do that for math, for ELA, and for social-emotional learning. From there, we break off into individual groups or sections. So a teacher would be meeting with a math specialist, the teacher would be meeting with an ELA specialist, and then another teacher would be meeting with me as a social-emotional specialist. And throughout the rotation model, they would spend about 40 minutes with an interventionist, really looking at targeting specific skills and strategies for the individual students within their classroom. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about that next. So we would look at this kind of, again, those three tiers, just the triangle that Sean was talking about. That whole tier one model is for all students, and we look at this not only, we first, we want to start kind of broad-based. We look at it as this whole-school model. And again, that's kind of with our Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports, our PBIS program. That was started about seven, seven or eight years ago at Clyde F. Brown. It's the, it's the core values of the school. So your children might have talked about taking care of themselves, taking care of others, and taking care of the environment. It's our school-based expectations that are discussed and taught to students in all sorts of areas of the school, the classroom, the hallway, the cafeteria, everywhere, the bus. So that's kind of the whole school. Then we wanted to look more at tier one supports for classroom lessons and interventions. At Clyde Brown, we use the Open Circle Social-Emotional Learning Curriculum. And so, we were really lucky, in the fall, our teachers got together and really looked at the Open Circle curriculum. They looked at supplemental, other lessons that they were doing for social-emotional learning, and they looked at the CASL standards that Sean mentioned earlier, that circle wheel. And we really tried to make sure and look to see that our lessons were addressing the CASL standards that are so important for social-emotional learning. And what we found is, we found that there were certain foundation lessons that we wanted to make sure that we were really, making sure that every classroom was providing those foundational Open Circle lessons. So when we do those data teams, and I'm meeting with the classroom teacher, we're looking at those whole-class lessons. We're talking about making sure that those foundation lessons are continuing. And then, we're also talking about any supplemental, additional lessons that might be tailored specific for that classroom, for all the students in that classroom, based on the needs and the screening that we have. Then we look at kind of, so that's kind of the all, right, the whole, the many. And then, you're kind of looking at the few, or the, kind of coming down the triangle to tier two and tier three. So our tier two and tier three, when we're talking in a data team model, we might be looking at specific strategies or interventions to support students. That could be behavior plans, checklists, different things that might help them within the classroom. And it might also include some small group or individualized instruction outside of the classroom for six to eight weeks with a, with a counselor. So our strategies and our interventions are very skill-focused, depending on the results of the screening and also the conversation with the teacher and the data teams, to focus on specific skill development for students. We did talk, I talked a little bit about our screenings. We do them in September, December, March. We will do them again in June to see progress, to see how students are progressing in social-emotional learning throughout the school year. So now, we're going to talk a little bit about what we learned and our future directions.
All right. Just to lead into that, this is a pilot, so we're, we're learning, okay? This is a, kind of the first roll, rollout. So, we've learned a lot of things, and there's some things we, we don't know what we don't know yet, okay? So, we've screened all kids, and the screening went well in some ways, and some other, in some other ways it didn't. So we're going to make some adjust, you know, some adjustments to the screening. It's tricky to screen kids at the upper level when they have two, two to five teachers, okay? So, we're going to work out those kinks. But the good, you know, you know, the positive was, all students were screened in schools. And I, I don't know of many school districts that are doing that, that are keeping a pulse on kind of how, how kids are doing with these important skills. So, that was a real plus. Our teaming worked really well at the elementary level, okay? It's dynamic to watch the teachers sit and discuss all the kids, all the data at the upper levels. It gets trickier, again, with more teachers, more, you know, there's, there's multiple points of input. Kids get more complex as they get older, okay? So we'll be working on the data teaming at the middle school and the high school level, you know, as well. With curriculum, and I'll, and I'll kind of lead into that with Elise, is we had a curriculum, or we have a curriculum at the, at the elementary level with the Open Circle, and then we have these new standards. So we have A and B, how do they mesh? So maybe I'll let the, the expert speak on that one.
So I think kind of looking at the future direction of social-emotional learning in Milas, it's really important to think about, again, those tiers. And looking at tier one, I think it's important for us to, again, look at that curriculum, look at the CASL standards, see if there are any gaps, and see how we are going to fill those gaps with curriculum enhancements, supplemental lessons, different things like that. With that goes training of teachers, to making sure that teachers are feeling supported, that they are feeling, that they are understanding any new curriculum changes, and supporting them with that. Looking at tier two and tier three, you know, I think we did a really nice job of, of supporting the students at tier two and tier three. I think expanding those service visits are always helpful, so you can kind of reach more students, and we're kind of deep in the focus a little bit. And, switch my page. And then, kind of, the third prong here really is looking to increase parent communication and involvement. It's really important for parents to know what their children are learning in school, not only academically for math and ELA, but also for social-emotional learning. So that way, parents can utilize the same language at home, that they can learn to, not only learn some of the language that students are using in the classroom, but then bridge that to home situations and ways to support children's social-emotional learning in the home environment. So those are some things that we're looking to hopefully do in the future. So, those are some things that we're looking to hopefully do in the future, to kind of build some possible parent workshops, some parent connections to improve that as well.
Any questions?
I have a question. So, is part of this pilot project, is it to look at the academic performance, the better performance, because eleven percent who receive some level of SEL training improved their academic performance? So, was that built in, or is that, do you have to do this year? And then going forward, are you looking at it? How are you going to do that?
So, I think that, you know, I think when you look at those numbers of the twenty, ninety-one, and eleven, it's, I think, and Sean, you can remove the number there. I think that when you're putting in social emotional interventions through those tier models, the Tier One, the Tier Two, and Tier Three, the payoff for that will be academic, an increase in academic supports for students who are identified as needing extra support. I think that that's something that we want to take a look at. I don't think it's something that we've done with this particular pilot. It's kind of getting the testing.
Yeah, it's something we've directly measured, okay? We're measuring the, you know, the number of at-risk students throughout the school year, okay? The research should guide what we do, and then, you know, the actual measurement of that, we see that with maybe MCAS scores, or, you know, there's other academic measures out there, but we're not directly tying that to the plan at this point, that may be some, you know, something to look at in the future.
So, I have another question related to that. So, have you seen an improvement in behavior in any of the schools, the general behavior? And in addition to that, did you identify anyone through this screening that maybe kind of fell through the cracks before? Did this screening bring in, or put more students on the radar screen that maybe didn't exist before?
So, this is my first year at Clyde Brown, so I can't speak specifically to past practice. But I can let you know that we have, there's been a number of students that were identified through the screening process. We've run over twenty groups throughout the school year for Tier Two and Tier Three students for social emotional learning. So, we've serviced over sixty students, and that's in a six-to-eight-week cycle. So, this is consistent support. This isn't, you know, sometimes we have students who might struggle coming into school a few times. That's not counting those student numbers. This is students who are seen consistently. So, that's, I think that's a pretty significant number. I've been, you know, doing this work for a very long time, not here, but in other districts. And I was really excited to be part of this process, to be part of this innovative pilot, and really seeing how spectacular it's been. I think that, as a counselor, past practice for identifying students, you know, of need was kind of just, you know, kind of, there wasn't really, there wasn't really a targeted plan to do that. So, I think that this has been really helpful. Again, I can't speak to specific, you know, who, but I think that the numbers speak for themselves, that we've been able to really identify and support a large number of students who need it.
Yeah, one thing we did learn at the high school through our discussion after the screening was the counselor at the high school felt like there were some kids that weren't identified by the screening. So, those are kids that are still included in services. And as well, looking at next year, possibility of a student report as part of the input, okay, through their advisory. So, that's something we're looking at next year, for those kids that, while they appear to their teachers to be doing fine internally, especially as they get older, they're certainly more complex, that they can self-report, you know?
And I also think it's important to note that although we do those screenings in September, December, March, and June, there have been times when students might come up through a teacher referral or a parent referral in between those times. And obviously, we're supporting those students as well. So, it's not, okay, you missed the cutoff line, and now you're not part of the group. We're still obviously supporting students who need it at any point in time.
Anyone else?
I have a question. So, I was just wondering, you said this is the first year they were doing this, and I was wondering how you brought the teachers up to speed on being able to do this, and when do they have time to collaborate and do all this on top of all the other expectations that they have? And I only ask you because I also am a teacher, and I know a lot of things are kind of put on teachers' plates. So, just wondering how you were kind of able to help the teachers that can then in turn help you, and like what the plan is going forward, so that it's not a burden for them to do this?
So, I think we were really lucky that the October Professional Development Day, we were able to roll out our social emotional learning program to teachers. We were able to do a district-wide presentation on social emotional learning, so it kind of brought everybody up to speed. And then we were able to go back to the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level, and dive more deeply into that, to have more discussion and clarification around the process. The screening tool is really pretty quick. It probably takes, I don't even know.
So, it's not like an actual lesson that they have to plan to like add?
No, no, so the screening tool is really, really fast. I could, off the top of my head, I can't think, it's probably five, ten minutes. I mean, it's really, it's three simple questions. It's a rating scale, so it's very quick. The data team meeting, we actually planned for those, so they take place during the school day. We have sub-coverage to support, because this work is so important, that we are able to have teachers come and spend a chunk of time doing that rotation model for data teams. Data teams aren't new. They're things that districts have been doing for years, but this is a new way of doing it. I think it's been really, really exciting to be part of, and I think that teachers really, I've never, and I'm talking about where my previous, I mean, my previous district is fantastic, and they do amazing innovative things as well. I think that the social emotional learning component is not something that's always been part of a data team, so it's kind of new. And I think having teachers be able to spend forty minutes, you know, three times a year to really dive deep. And then we always supplement that with, you know, consultations with a counselor at different times as needed, during team time, during different planning opportunities as well to follow up. So, yeah, no, and I'm, we're always really, really careful of teacher time, because that's so valuable.
And instruction. I think you're a teacher, so remember those stats at the beginning. It's worth the time, and I think...
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that it's not worth it. I just was curious how you were working it in today.
Anyone else? Mr. Cudry.
I have a question. One, I guess, as you're going through this, are there any resources, or to what extent are we short resources, and that you have identified, or think you always are keenly aware of asking for those? And then, secondarily on that, to kind of build on a little bit, more with the middle school, hopefully more with the middle school and high school. But, it's a conversation that's coming up with potential for legalized marijuana, and part of the discussion, there's, there are a couple of different companies who are looking to establish retail and grow facilities in town. We've been asked to participate with the selectmen in identifying needs or resources that could be associated, or would be associated with, you know, drugs, marijuana, things in the community. So, identifying additional needs, because part of what the town is allowed to do is charge a tax to those companies for being here. But part of the, they call it Community Impact Agreement, is you have to tie it to, how is, how are we going to use those funds to address needs that potentially come up? So, if there's, if there are things you have identified now, on the side of that, we'd like to kind of understand how our staffing is, and how are people in the building being able to handle what you guys are finding now, and then the other ones are more of a long-term thing.
You want to speak?
Just say a quick word, this is a pilot, we're just starting, we're just getting learning, okay? A quick observation from me with the data is that there's a bubble in the middle school, okay? Numbers are higher. Kids are coming out of elementary school, and their bodies are going crazy, and they're trying to get along with their friends, and, okay? And there's higher numbers there. So, what that means at this point, we're not exactly sure, okay? But, that's just one quick observation.
We did, you know, just to speak to kind of those future directions, earlier this spring, Dr. Marx and Mr. Seibert and myself kind of collaborated on a, we did a grant, we went in for a grant proposal. It's very unlikely that we're gonna, you know, we hope, but it doesn't seem likely that that's going to necessarily happen. But I think that, you know, from that, those are some areas that we would be looking at, kind of those three that I've discussed, you know, kind of expanding those Tier Two and Tier Three services for students, really expanding and looking at the Tier One curriculum, and, you know, then working with teachers, collaborating with teachers, consulting with teachers, training teachers, I think, because the teachers are, you know, they're on the ground floor, right? They're, you know, boots on the ground, so they're there, they're your first, you know, people who are going to be working with students who need social emotional support. So, we really want to make sure that we're keeping that up too. So, I think, oh, great, and then of course, the parent component, which is something I'm really excited about too, is something.
Mr. Chair, if I may? Just to give a little context, since Elise and Sean are both relatively new to the district, of course, we've been doing social emotional learning for many years, and Open Circle's been in place. We have a middle school curriculum in place, team huddles at the middle school, peer leaders, advisories at the high school. So, it, you know, I just want the public to know, we have been incorporating social emotional learning, but this has been a real opportunity to make it consistent, comprehensive, and a systematized approach, so that kids don't fall through the cracks. The tools of the MINE program in preschool and kindergarten explicitly teaches self-regulation. Our teachers, especially in the middle school in fifth grade, it's a focus for them. Fifth-grade teachers do a lot on teaching the executive functioning skills and how to organize yourself and all those things. So, the, I do think that it has given us some really good data to prove in a grant, and maybe the host agreement, or other funding sources, that the need, this need is great. It's not just a great need in Milis, it's a great need everywhere. And many, many schools are focusing on addressing the social emotional skills. I saw a great little tweet the other day that said something like, you can't bloom, higher-order thinking skills, twenty-first-century skills, you can't do blooms until you take care of Maslow. Maslow being the safety, security, basic human needs of food and social emotional safety. So, it is, it's been a wonderful process to see how it's deepening in the schools, and I applaud Dr. Marx and the team that, of counselors and our school psychologists for really taking it into a much more robust model. We should write an article, you should write an article about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is superintendent's report. We've already done the May enrollment. Correct?
Yep, that's really very little changed in enrollments. We have had some families move in and out, but basically stays the same. I did want to update the committee on preschool enrollment and kindergarten enrollment. Currently, we have only about forty preschool students enrolled, and five are on a waitlist. So, we're hoping for more enrollments, so that we can add the half-day session to accommodate not only those five, but hopefully more students. In kindergarten, we have seventy-five currently enrolled, and only eight of those are in a half-day session. So, unless we get a lot of summer enrollment, move-ins, et cetera, we may be looking at running for the four sessions of kindergarten, and having perhaps half-day students integrated into the full-day sessions. So, we'll be monitoring those closely, monitoring how right up until August, and trying to make plans for either eventuality.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair? Yes? Mr. Cudry?
Yeah, as we, as we approach that, if we have that scenario in kindergarten, can, well in advance, can we get a re-education on how we would handle having half-day kids in a full-day class, so that everybody is more than aware and has some comprehension of how the half-day kids are getting the same education as the full day? Because we have always maintained that there was some expansion in, they did some extra, they went deeper if they stayed for the full day, but it was not, but the full day did not get any more or different things than the half-day. So, in that, if that's where it comes, I'd like to see the schedule of exactly what's going to get covered and what would be covered in the afternoon, so that we understand that the kids who are only there for half-day are not missing things that they would have otherwise caught.
I'll ask, I'll ask, yes. And, you know, ideally, we'll get more involvement.
Right, but I just, because if we do go down that path, I know that that question's going to come.
Right.
One other question on enrollment, you had, Nancy, you had sent us the memos that went out about the integrated third, fourth-grade class. Could you let us know, I forget what the deadline was, but I'm interested to know how many current third-going into fourth-grade students, families are staying in that class?
Mm-hmm.
Or vice versa, how many are opting out, I guess really is the question.
Mm-hmm.
Also, capital expenses. That superintendent?
Yes. Mr. Angler is hiding back there, getting some work done this evening. We have compiled a tentative plan for, well, first of all, we've done some projections for the utilities, and we do believe we'll have a little bit of utility money, which I've put into the third category.
End of the year?
End of year, yeah. The title's missing, but end of year, end of year category.
What's earmark? What are you using for earmark?
So, if you recall last meeting, we talked about in the working session, the earmark money is legislative monies that Senator Ross and Representative Linsky had put into the earmark...
That was a hundred and fifty?
From the air quality?
It was a hundred and fifty, but then we were paying back-to-town testing, right?
Right.
For the air quality issues, yeah.
So, what was the total? What did we end up with?
We should have eighty-nine thousand.
Eighty-nine thousand.
Now, and I will bring to the committee, I'm in the process of inquiring as to what the appropriate process is for paying back the town for the sixty-one thousand of air quality testing. But the, so the earmark money doesn't add up to the eighty-nine thousand currently, but we have a tentative plan at the top of the page. These four items are on the town warrant, the purchase of the second bus, the auditorium repair, repairing and replacement of seating, and the baseball field repairs and construction, reconstruction of the baseball field, and forty thousand for upgrading the rest of the bathrooms. We still have some money, and we'll be doing a lot of bathroom work this summer. So, Mr. Angler's going to be very, very busy this summer with... So Mr. Angler's going to be very, very busy this summer with his crew of people and a lot of, a lot of construction going on. We worked on the earmark, thinking that these are the things that are from our previous capital items list, the red, white, and blue sheet, with the addition of a couple things from athletics that, when the committee asked the athletic department to identify what are the, what are the needs in the next couple of years. So, technology, we have split the hard drives that was on our previous list into two funding sources, half of them coming from earmark funds, half of them coming from end-of-year funds. The outdoor sound system needs to be replaced, irrigation for the baseball field, the pressbox repairs are absolutely necessary. The, only the infield for the baseball field is irrigated currently, so we would try to irrigate the outfield as well as part of the baseball field project. And Mr. Angler's looking into whether it might be cost-effective in the long run to have a well provide that water. We've mentioned the HVAC units on top of the roof at the middle high school need either replacement or repairs. And then there are two items that, at the time, now that we've gotten more robust quotes, we believe that there will be a little bit over the ninety thousand needed for the auditorium repair and the sixty thousand for the baseball field. So those are to be determined. Should I pause there and let you ask, Mr. Angler or, or me, any questions on any of those? We're in the process of getting, either going out to bid for the auditorium and the baseball and getting quotes for all the rest of them because they fall under the, the threshold we don't need to get.
This is, this is a helpful list. I would just, I would just say we should wait until after town meeting before making any commitments in case some of these warrant articles up top do not fund. I don't wanna start spending the earmark or the end of the year. We're gonna spend the money regardless, but it's a question of what happens. Fair enough. We are going to have a discussion to spend the money. I think that discussion has to wait until at least after town meeting next week because if they don't fund that bus or they don't fund that baseball field and other issues, we may have to, you know. The auditorium seating is nice, it's not just on us, but that's not a, that's not a must fund where we have to absolutely have it. We do need to keep the bathrooms updated. So I just would say, to, to Mr. Conroy's point, we can, a conversation, I think that conversation needs to happen at least after town meeting. I'm sorry, I cut you off, but I, so I don't, I don't think we can move, I think.
It's a good point.
So the, the end of the year, where do we think that's going to come from?
Utilities.
Utilities? And we're pretty confident that that, that it's gonna be close to thirty thousand?
There may be, there may be more, but what we've done right now is project out the utilities and we know that there's about thirty thousand in utilities that even though it was a cold winter, because we burned the natural gas, there is a, some savings more on the electrical this year than on the heating, but.
Is there anything that needs to, is there anything that's urgent where it's, we're up against something or we can't do some, an activity because of this? Is there anything on this list? I mean, I'm only, we're only talking a week, but is there anything on this list that is so urgent that we have to look at it tonight?
Nothing tonight, but as you mentioned earlier, the auditorium seating, something has to be done in the auditorium. We, we don't have anything to help and repair anything that we have right now. So we do need to replace something of some nature this year or this summer, just to get an inventory. So if we're not gonna do the whole thing, if we're only doing half or quarter, just to, just to grab some inventory from whatever we replace.
Sure. I'm not saying it's not important, but.
But no, nothing tonight.
Okay.
Speaking about town meeting and the auditorium, do we, do we have a priority on how we would, what we would do with the ninety thousand immediately? So I know, I think when you guys went to the finance committee, there was some questions about, well, does, is the ninety gonna go to the, to the, because the, the full ask was a hundred and fifty thousand to do the seating and the lighting and the, and doing everything. Right. So just in case this does come up at town meeting, do we have a priority of what the ninety thousand would do right away? So would we, would we do all the seating and leave the lighting and audio? I just, just, we, that question may come up.
Well, it depends how the warrant is written up, but I would think that if, again, if we had the ninety thousand.
Yep.
Personally, I think it'd be, I, I'd like to put a little bit in each if possible.
Okay.
But at the same point, as I was talking to Mrs. Gessis and earlier about it, that, you know, that once you start doing two SKUs of batches of branches of seating, you know, there will be a slight difference. And I'm not quite sure about the sound, Dave, you probably fill in more about that, but I think that, I think right now we're shooting strictly just at the seating.
Okay.
Does the, does the ninety thousand cover the cost to replace all the seats?
We don't think so at this very moment either, so.
Is it like seventy-five percent of it?
I would think it's closer to eighty, probably closer to ninety percent.
So there'll still be some seats that we, or section that we wouldn't be able to repair?
If we were only given ninety thousand, I don't think we'd be able to place all the seats in there. That's correct.
And that's why we put the overage below because what happened was we had a quote, but it didn't have necessarily the fire retardant cushions and the level of sturdiness that, that when John looked at that quote from before, we, we agreed that we should upgrade, need the fire retardant, and we, we wanted a very sturdy chair. So the RFP is being developed now. It'll go in goods and services. It will be a full bid process and we'll alert the, the vendors to the fact that we're going out to bid. And ideally, we'd get a, a lower cost when we do that many chairs. It's, I forget, four hundred, five hundred chairs.
Four hundred and forty-one.
So we have that information, but before the end of the year so we can allocate that money?
Yes, yes. We should, we should have it in, within, in June. The RFP is being developed this week and, and I think there, it stays out for two weeks, a two-week period, and then we'll open the bids.
So the original RFP with, without modifying it, what was that cost? Do we know what that was for, to replace all, all of the chairs? So we can get an idea.
It was an estimate, not a, not a bid.
Sure.
How much, how many chairs are there?
Four hundred and forty-one.
In total, total?
Correct.
Do we have a good educated guess of what that cost would be based off of the quotes that we have?
There's a possibility around the hundred, again, it's, it's around the hundred and ten range possibly. That's, it was twenty thousand for the additional, for the fire coating. The chairs were coming in around the eighty-nine range. And, and I think if we do some of the work ourselves as far as, because at that point.
Demo and stuff?
At that point, we can, we're just ripping out, we're not saving anything. So I'd like to think we could possibly even do that in-house or, and save some money on that end.
Okay. So just to get an idea of how much it would go over if we did get the ninety thousand, we're probably looking for another twenty, twenty-five thousand to replace to get all of the chairs, hopefully?
Yeah, and at that point, based on what you said, if you do one section and then all of a sudden you leave some, are you gonna get the exact same chairs and are they gonna fit?
Yeah, with it being a year difference, you'd like to think you still would, you would if we're looking at next year and possibly getting chairs that following year. So, but whether we do sections or whether you just do it half, you know, it's, it's up for discussion.
Or we look to see if we could find twenty grand and try to do it.
It wouldn't look very nice if we had one section of old chairs and.
If it was, if it was another ninety thousand dollars, it'd be a different discussion, but if it's literally just another twenty, we'd have to try to find, we'd have to try to find that money to do it all at once because there's a, there will be a cost savings just to do it all at once as well.
There'd be a cost savings of them purchasing, of purchasing other chairs and bum-bum-sum. There's also be a savings of us now extracting all of them.
It's close enough that I think we'd have to have that conversation. So let's hopefully that will get funded. Great. Any other questions about the capital plan?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. For the next round of discussions that we have, for the ones, I guess earmark down, are they in priority order right now of if we were, if we had the money, if we would take it in that order?
What we did from our previous capital needs list on our red, white, and blue sheet, we did have the discussion and de-prioritized some that are now at the bottom. They're less essential than the ones we've put above. So I would say, other than, you know, other than saying the ones at the bottom are less important for now, that within a category, they're not really prioritized.
So as we, as we look to make those decisions, maybe it'd be helpful for us if there's a priority within each of those subgroups. That would be, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is it possible to, to get some sort of just estimate on some, on some of these needs or, you know, the unfunded of what they would be, just in case there is, you know, if we have a smaller amount of money that left over that we could knock out some of these kind of, I know they're less, they say they're less important, but some of these could make a big impact on just the aesthetics of the school when you walk in, especially the lockers. So if we could bang out some of those, even though they're not high priority, they do make a big impact to people when they walk, when you walk in.
If it's not a lot of work, I, I do agree that if we have estimates on there, it would be helpful even, because we can keep them in the buckets, but it's still, it's still a good idea at any point in time, we could say, "Our capital expenses in total are this," right? And then, and then we could work at addressing them as we get funding sources. So I, I think unless that's a lot of work, and if they're, if they're guestimates, they're guestimates, they're not bids, you can, we can put an asterisk by them and say, "This is an estimate."
We'll do our best to get some numbers.
Thank you, Jill.
My concern is this is a huge amount of work for one summer, so, and Mr. Angler doesn't have a secretary. So I'm working on, on trying to figure out a way to provide him with the clerical support for getting three estimates for each of these projects. I didn't count them up, but it's probably over twenty-five different projects. Many of them can only be done in the summer because students are not present. Those that we can push off until maybe the fall, we're talking about.
No, but getting an estimate is not, we don't, we wouldn't need three estimates for getting an estimate on numbers.
And I would ask then, I would suggest, we, you can even put like, we, it's not possible to do unless we had somebody come in and do it. So you, if there's an estimate, but then you say, it's less, it's less about money than it is about time, make that note and then we're not, then we're not gonna go looking to fund something that we can't get done anyway. That's, but if we, yeah, so if there's stuff on here that you just say, you know, we, we just can't, even if I could, even if we had the money, we can do it and it's not something that has to get done today.
So we, then we should take it off the list?
Yeah.
I mean, we could just take it off the list if it's not, if it's something, if it's a purchase and we could, if we found the money, that's fine, but if it's a project that you guys are doing in-house and you don't have the capabilities or it's not prioritized enough, then let's just take it off the list. You keep it on your, your draft working sheet. And we keep this list clean with numbers and what we could do in a short period of time.
So I, I don't disagree, but some of these things, if we can't do it in-house, is it, do we, so like the locker painting repairs, if we can't do it in-house, is it, does it make a, you know, how much extra would it be to have somebody come in and just repair the lockers? It's, I don't, I don't think we should discount some of these projects because we can't do them in-house?
I'm not saying discount them. I'm just, I'm just trying to, if we're, if we're, if we're trying to create a list of things that we're gonna do this year into next, I think that's more of the, that's more of the issue. I don't think we should, because some of these we're not doing on our own, some we're doing, we're, we're bringing in service or we're purchasing things. I, I just, I think we should have numbers on there.
No, I agree. I think we need to have numbers on there regardless so we can make informed decisions and, and, you know, just some of these things like locker room upgrades, it's, that's pretty broad, so what, you know, what are we talking about? Are we gutting a locker room or are we just painting it? Like just a little more details or, and again, it, it doesn't have to be a formal bid, just your best guess of, hey, this, we're looking at, you know, ten to twenty-five thousand to, to get these done. So at least we have an idea in our minds what it's gonna take. Like this can take ten to twenty-five thousand and we can't do it in-house. So then when we're looking at the list, we know that it's gonna take ten to twenty thousand, but we're also gonna have some added costs because there's no way we can do that in-house. So we're gonna have to bring.
Right, it's ten to twenty if we were to do it in-house, but it's gonna cost another ten because we gotta bring people in to do it.
Yeah, without that information, it's hard for us to make informed decisions about these projects.
And so I see the overage on the seating and the baseball fields. So is the baseball field sixty or what, what's the total, what's the cost on the baseball field? Because we asked for sixty. I, is it more than sixty?
Well, there is, there's some discussion to be made on that as well, only, and it's, it's still being discussed, whether it's MIA compliant. So there's some discussion that the baseball field is not compliant for tournament play. So I'm getting numbers and I have yet to take a tape measure from home plate to left and right field to confirm and see where we stand on that. So, but we're hoping for, originally what we were planning on doing was making the play, the infield play. Right now, there's a, I think if you guys remember, there's a six, eight inch drop going in from outfield from the infield to the outfield. So this, the sixty thousand originally that was discussed was to just work on the infield itself and bring that up, bring it to grade and making sure that's safe and playable surface. We doing the irrigation, clay, sod, and all that stuff. Since then, we were thinking, well, if we're only maybe twenty grand away from now moving this back and tweaking it a little bit to the left and maybe adding some fill on left field line and taking some other things in consideration that we can make this, you know, a full, but generally, I mean, why put in sixty thousand just to fit, just to do the infield if we're not compliant for MIA baseball?
I was under the assumption that the sixty was gonna get us in compliance. I didn't know that there was.
Sixty was just to make it a.
Safe and playable, safe and playable only, yeah.
So we're, we're working on those numbers as well?
Yes.
A lot of numbers, Sean. Anything else?
Can I just ask one more question about baseball field? So the original plan was to get started like almost immediately after the.
The last out, exactly.
Yeah, so is that gonna impact the schedule?
It all depends on if and when, yeah. If, if we, we should have an answer before the last out, I would think.
Okay.
On what, which we, what we can do, whether it's just the sixty and we're just dealing just with the infield, or are we going, can we find the extra money and make it, and tweak the field and do everything we want? The, one of the contractors who I've been dealing with, I know this is us who out to bid, but he is aware of our changes and he still thinks that we can stay somewhat within that realm.
Of the timeframe?
Of the timeframe, correct.
Okay.
Because that, that, because what we'd be doing is the sods going on the infield, the outfield would just be hydro-seated, and that should be a playable surface by the next baseball season.
It's gotten it close, though.
Not so much because you'll have all summer and then you'll still have fall to grow and then, you know.
The football team practices out there, are you gonna keep them off?
Well, that, well, yes, and that's part of this well system as well as, well, it's a part of the well system is to create the back forty from, I guess, so it's been. part of the well system, is to create the back 40 from, I guess, is what it's been called, and also the Brookfield, making those more playable practice facilities, so the kids can play, practice there, and games can be held in the fields that they.
And then one last question, I promise I'll stop. That, that extra, did you say it was maybe another 20K, or we're not sure even what that's going to be at?
We're not quite sure, because he wasn't, you know, we were talking pretty much just over the phone on this, on the last part, moving it back probably eight to 10 feet, and moving it to like a couple degrees, only because right field, there's a telephone pole there. So where I'm, if, if I was a betting man, I would say around the 70, 75 inch.
All together?
Yes.
Okay.
So another 15, or another 75?
Another 15 or 60, because the number we have for the infield is under the 60. So we took that 60 in consideration to help us out with possibly aerating, you know, irrigating the outfield, if we had the chance.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have one other question. So if memory serves, I think that we had the baseball, the Millis Youth Baseball in at the beginning of the year, and don't, doesn't Babe Ruth use that field in the summertime? Because I think we were talking to them about field usage fees, and part of the deal was that they, they do some maintenance and work to that field. So as we go forward with this plan, we probably need to get in touch with Millis Youth Base, Millis Youth Baseball, not easy for me to say, just to alert them of that. Because I thought it was that field that the Babe Ruth team plays on.
The gentleman has been in touch with us, and, and he's aware that we are talking about possibly working on the field as well.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Next is the chairman's report.
Thank you.
And I will defer to the previous chairman.
Previous chair.
As I am not ready. Ms. Gibbons?
So just an, an update on when last we spoke, there was some discussion around the wording of the warrant article that will be posed at town meeting related to the joint town and school finance director position. So there, there has been, so for, for the viewing public, I'll just do a, a brief summary, I suppose. There are some changes in staffing that are happening, and there's been some discussion between the school committee and the board of selectmen, and the town administrator and superintendent about having the finance director for the town also be a position that kind of is shared across the town and the school district. So with that, there was discussions related to the job description of that town, of that, well, it's called the finance director of Millis. And then in order for that to go forward, there are some charter amendments that need to happen that are on the warrant for next week, that actually, we need to talk about how we amend that on the floor.
That's already been done.
Oh.
It's already, then we wrote.
Yeah, but is that in the published warrant? I didn't check the warrant. I should have checked the warrant. So.
The motion that'll be made will be.
The mo, okay, so the motion is what it is?
The motion that'll be made will include the language that specifically calls out the fact that the school business manager slash assistant, whatever position that is, is a school committee hire. And, and so even though day-to-day, it will report to the superintendent and the town finance director that the school committee has, has not been removed from its statutory oversight of that role. So that will be, to, to, last week. So that, that's how it'll be made. But we should actually.
Yeah.
Take a vote to support that article, because it actually requires, in order for that bylaw to go into effect, it requires a vote by us and.
Town meeting.
Town meeting. How, it's not. We could either do it now, or right before town meeting, and have it formally on our agenda before town meeting. But because it not being formally on our agenda now, the vote part, it's just as an update.
New business. We have old business and new business.
We could do that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's been discussed. We've talked about this a couple times. It's new business.
That's fine.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah. Let me, I'm just going to look up and see if I can find what article number it is. Okay. So go ahead with other stuff, and I'll come back.
So the second.
Anything else on, anything else on that, or is this?
No, that's, that's the full update. The only other thing that we just need to confirm is how we make the, we just need to designate somebody to make the motion on the floor at town meeting.
I have it on my desk.
Carrie has last, Carrie has the last pack, and I gave it to you.
Do you have the warrant?
Oh, yeah.
Wouldn't it be the new, wouldn't it be the new motion?
We just need to.
She's.
Okay.
Yeah, the article number.
Okay.
And while Carrie's looking for that, what I'm saying, Mr. Chair, is we just, at some point, we just need to designate our individual that will make the motion on the floor. So if you want to do it as the chair, that.
So we have to, we have to make a motion?
No.
Who's making the motion?
The finance committee will make the motion.
All of them make the motion, and read it in?
They'll make the motion to approve the article.
Right, but the.
Yeah, it'll, yeah.
And they'll put that language in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. I take it back.
I don't see it, Jody. Is it in the purple one?
Is it in the purple? Horatio.
Here it is.
Article 30?
Oh, actually, no, I think it's article 30. Take a look, Mark.
Is that it?
No, it's section 30 of the town bylaws.
Oh, sorry.
Article five of the bylaws.
I got it. Hold on. Yep.
We also just make a motion to just, just discuss the article, the article that discusses this, but we need the number. Do you have it, can you?
Yep. Just have to look at. 24. Finance Director Bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
24.
Okay. Mark, make your motion, please.
Sorry. I make a motion that we approve, we support the approval of article 24 at town meeting on May 14th.
Second.
Any discussion? A motion's been made to approve, to support the school committee's support of article 24 at next Monday's town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
And the next one, I am remiss, because I have not done any work on the naming of the new elementary school. And we had discussed in previous meetings, putting, potentially putting a survey out to the public to see if there was interest in renaming the school, and then opening it up for people to submit names, and then come before us for discussions on that. So I will take that as my first non-chair action item to follow up on that for the next meeting. I've spoken with a couple of members from the elementary school building committee, and they are asking for when we'll have our decision on that. So I asked them for a drop dead date for when they need the final decision on whether the name is going to change or not. I'm just waiting to hear back on that, so I'll report back.
Do we need to decide the basketball court first, or the name of the school?
That's an excellent question, and I will know more after the fif, after the 15th of May, which is next week, after the next ESBC meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for your year of service. You worked very, very hard with a lot going on around the school building as well. Subcommittee reports, Elementary School Building Committee?
So if anybody has been near either school, you can see a lot of steel's been put up since the last time that we met. So I think last time we were here, we talked about, you could see the roof line of the cafeteria. Now you can see the roof line of the K, the preschool K1, 2 wing, which is the one that comes to the side of the bandstand. I've gotten a bunch of questions as to whether the bandstand is staying or not. Just so that everyone can rest assured, the bandstand remains. So if there's sort of an L for those folks that may not know. So there's kind of an L of building that goes around the bandstand. But everything is proceeding as it's supposed to, and we'll have more updates at the next meeting, because we have an ESBC meeting next week.
Thank you. Okay, any correspondence, Nancy?
No.
No, no correspondence?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Any school committee announcements? Okay. Anyone else want to, do you have some more?
Nope.
Okay. We are going into executive session. It was previously scheduled before, but we had to move it to go into executive session. So actually, before we go, Robin, welcome aboard. Congratulations on winning your first election.
Thanks.
It was a highly contested race. You and I both benefited from no one wanting to come. So welcome aboard. It's a, a very good committee, a lot to learn, and hopefully you will have a good experience here on the committee. Anything else? Okay. I need a motion to go into executive session, not to return to open session.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations for Dave Bush, Don Terrell, and Secretary Clerk Association request, and we will not be returning to open session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Have to do a roll call vote, sorry.
Roll call vote, sorry. Denise Gibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Conroy?
Aye.
Ms. Roach?
Aye.
Ms. Briggs?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Okay, that's it.